All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Welcome to the auditorium. So with that, Chair Harrington, I will kick it over to you.
I have to say all of that all over again because I neglected to push the mic button. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our first-ever hybrid set of meetings here for the Washington County Housing Authority Board of Directors, as well as soon the Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today, this morning, is an adjustment for all of us as we have moved from holding our meetings virtually to being in person. Welcome to the new school academic year, to everyone out in our community as well. So Clerk Moss, could we have roll call and announcement, please?
Yes, we can. Director Harrington, the Washington County Board of Commissioners is now convening as the Washington County Board of Housing Authority Board of Directors for this regular session, September 6, 2022. Director Roper.
Here.
Director Savara.
Here.
Director Treese.
Here.
Director Rogers.
Here.
Director Fai.
Here.
Director Willy.
Here.
Director Harrington.
Here. And this time, I remembered to hit my mic button. So we have a new setup here, everyone. I'm looking straight out on the audience right now, but to my right is a tablet that has the camera so that everyone in the virtual community can see all of us. And before each member here in the room, we also have windows for seeing one another so that we're able to see all of you. And our audience can see it on the screen behind us as well. So that is just some of the adjustment that we're trying to make this morning. So onward to our agenda for the Housing Authority Board of Directors. The first item on that Board of Directors meeting is public comment for the Housing Authority. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone either in the room or virtually who would like to share comments with us today?
We have no one in the room, Madam Chair, that has signed up. Would any other members on our Zoom account wish to provide public comment to the Housing Authority for up to two minutes? I'll give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Director.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. The next item on the Housing Authority Board of Directors' agenda is our consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of two items. The first is to approve the minutes of our August 2, 2022 Housing Authority Board of Directors' meeting. And the second item is to approve the contract amendment with GSI Builders, Inc. for the Aloha Inn project. What are the wishes of the Board of Directors?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion from Director Savaro. Do we have a second? We have a second from Director Roper. Thank you. All those in favor of adopting today's consent agenda, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously seven to zero. The next item is our second public comment period for the Housing Authority Board of Directors. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to address us for up to five minutes?
Thank you, Director Harrington. We had no one signed up in the room. Would anyone on our attendees list participating virtually like to provide comment to the Housing Authority Board of Directors for up to five minutes? I'll give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Director.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we move on to Board of Director announcements. Are there any announcements from my colleagues here on the Housing Authority Board of Directors?
No announcements, but I would like to thank everyone for working so hard to accommodate hybrid meetings. I really do appreciate the effort that's been put into it. It's really neat to see you guys all in person, and I'm sorry that I can't be there. And then, other than that, the Valfree apartment grand opening was awesome. It was a great experience, and it was a pleasure to be able to be there with you, with you all, Akomi and everybody. It was beautiful.
Thank you, Director Roper. It was wonderful to see you, as well as Director Savaro, in person as well at the grand opening of the Valfree at Avaneda 26 out in Forest Grove with the number of new affordable homes, permanent affordable homes, right there in the Forest Grove community. Thank you for joining us. And seeing no additional comments, do we have a motion to adjourn the Housing Authority Board of Directors' meeting for today?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Director Savaro, a second from Director Roper. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously seven to zero. The Housing Authority Board of Directors' meeting of Tuesday, September 6, 2022, is now adjourned. Thank you, Directors, for joining us today. And we'll give our meeting logistics a moment to reorganize. And we will now convene as the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Clerk Moss, are we ready?
We are ready, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners, also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts, is now meeting in this regular session, September 6, 2022. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Fai.
Present.
Commissioner Treese.
Here.
Vice Chair Willy.
Here.
Chair Harrington.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Before we get into the agenda, welcome to everyone who's attending here in the room in the auditorium at the Public Services Building in person or virtually through our streaming internet, YouTube video, Zoom, or on the telephone. So welcome to everyone, and happy September. Just a brief update on our meeting agenda for today. The published agenda has been updated. On the consent agenda, item 13 has been pulled and will be coming back to us at a future date. Next, we'll move to public comment. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak with us today for up to two minutes per individual?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. We'll start with the in-person first, and the person I have on this is Bob Van Dyke. Bob, can you join us up here?
Clerk Moss, is this, are you running the clock, or am I supposed to be running?
We will run the timer for you, Vice Chair Willy.
All right, thank you.
Right. Go ahead, sir, for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, Commissioners, for the record. My name's Bob Van Dyke. I live in Forest Grove, Oregon, and it's great to be back in person today. I came today because I signed a recent letter to you about the state forest issue on behalf of an organization I work for called Wild Salmon Center. As I mentioned, I've lived in Forest Grove since 1994 and have spent a lot of time in our state forests, which, as you know, are really the only big public lands we have in the county here. I came to you today to encourage you to continue to support the State Forest HCP that's underway. I know the committee, the commission, has long been on the record in favor of balanced management of the state forests, and I think you'll find that. This has really been years under development. The latest iteration has started in 2018, I think, but somewhat shockingly, the first conversations about this were in the year 2000 that I know about. So this has been a long time coming. The federal NEPA process, as you know, is a long one. The recent EIS was 1,800 pages long. So there's been a lot of discussion over many years about this. I guess, from my view, there really are concerns on all sides. I want to be clear, from my community, I'm hearing some concerns, particularly about clearcutting and aerial spray of pesticides, but also about the fire risk that comes to forests from plantation forests that there'll be a lot of, there are now, will be a lot more. But there are also certainly benefits. There are some habitat benefits, significant habitat benefits, and benefits to water quality and to carbon storage in the plan as well. So I guess my message to you is that this really is a compromise, and it would be great to sort of move forward. It's a long-term plan, 50 years or 70 years, they hope this plan will be in place. And you'd really be following some other recent developments, like the Forest Accord and the Elliott State Forest, which are also seeking HCP. So this is really on the same track as them. Thanks. I'd be happy to take any comments, questions, if anyone has any. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Randick. We have no one else. Would any members in our Zoom attendee list to provide testimony for up to two minutes to the Board on any county-related topic? I'll give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Before we move on with the agenda, I would like to make a statement somewhat in the spirit of one of our local mayors, Mayor Pete Truax in Forest Grove. He's always done, I've had the opportunity to see him over the last couple of decades, paid tribute to wonderful community leaders who we are losing through the end-of-life process. So today, I would just like to share that I am impacted both as an elected official and as a person by the pending death of Bob Stacy. Much has been written about Mr. Stacy's contributions to our community. I had the honor of serving with him on the Metro Council, learning from his vast expertise, particularly with land use, as he previously was a lawyer for Thousand Friends of Oregon, an executive director at Thousand Friends of Oregon, as well as a director of community development at the city of Portland. But more than that, which is what I wanted to try and bring to life today, he has helped mentor a new generation of individuals, leaders here in our community, to have a deep appreciation for all that is the state of Oregon, its vast beauty, its vast resources, not only for clean air, clean water, natural habitat, but also vibrant communities and the people who live in our vibrant communities. But even so, part of what much of his professional involvement and achievements is written about, and yes, you too can search it on the internet. But I also want to pay tribute to Bob Stacy as a brilliant person. He is a, was a wonderful husband to Adrian Stacy, an artist here in our community and another beautiful person. He was a father. He was also a grandfather to both Sam and Bruno. And he and Adrian and their parents have tried to raise them to have the same deep appreciation, not only for Oregon, but our tremendous and fragile planet. So I just wanted to take a moment to share with my colleagues that he will be missed. He has left an incredible mark here in our state. He was one of the many people who contributed to the passage of Senate Bill 100, which is the foundation of our state land use, if I got that correct, 100 versus 10. Yes, 100. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers, the foundation for land use here in our great state. So thank you for enabling me to share those comments today, and if you would like to make any, please do feel free to do so. Commissioner Rogers.
I'd be happy to. I didn't know about that news. Bob and I came at things a little different at the beginning, and we found great unanimity through the years. And he was more than friendly to me, and we were always talking about a variety of tasks. We served on J-PAC for quite a while together and found that we had very similar interests and goals. And I'm stunned. I didn't know Bob had passed away. He'd been sick for some time. He shared a common name, his wife and mine's first name are the same, and we had a passion for a lot of similar things. So he, wow, he is a great leader and a great person. Sorry, Bob, that you're not with us anymore.
Commissioner Treese.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and thank you for your words. Since I've been relatively new, when I look at my friends here, to the political world, I can tell you that I actually feel like I was mentored by Bob in some of the work that I did prior to running for office. And the one thing that I don't think we have mentioned is his wonderful sense of humor and the fact that he could, he could take a difficult situation and see humor in how all of us approached it. And I just really appreciated him and his willingness to help guide me. So thank you for bringing this up.
Before we move on. All right. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of 12 items, one set of minutes, one item from community development, eight items from land use and transportation, two items from housing services. What are the wishes of the commission on today's consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt today's consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we have proclamations. Today, we have a proclamation to recognize the month of September as Suicide Prevention Month here in Washington County, and we have some wonderful members joining us today with a roster. Do we have any additional chairs? Or is there a chance we can use one of the microphones over here as well, or up here?
Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of County Commissioners. I don't have to stay up front after I do the introduction, and it looks like we have a third chair, so I think we could leave it at that.
Well, we will, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Semantle, so you can kick us off, and then folks can change around as is appropriate.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, again, good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Mira Semantle. I'm the interim director for Health and Human Services. It is an honor and a privilege to be with you today in person today for Suicide Prevention Month. I have a wonderful team here with me today that has a great presentation prepared for you. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Marie Bowman-Davis, our Public Health Division Manager, to kick us off and introduce the rest of the team with us.
Thank you, Mira. Thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Good morning. Zev, please come forward. Today, we are here to request your commission adopt September as Suicide Prevention Month. As you may be aware, oh, I guess for the record, my name is Marie Bowman-Davis, Public Health Division Manager and local public health administrator. As the community may be aware, suicide prevention is a worldwide issue and concern, and today we're here to help de-stigmatize this difficult topic. We do have a presentation, and if we can go ahead and get that started, next slide, please. I will use the clicker, thank you. And I am joined here today by Zev Braun, Suicide Prevention Program Coordinator and a community member that Zev will introduce in a little bit. And maybe I can use the clicker? Where am I pointing? Up? Up. There, oh, there we go. Yes? Okay. So in our presentation today, we'll talk a little bit about the county, Washington County Suicide Prevention efforts, our Suicide Prevention Month, the Suicide Prevention Council. We'll provide you an opportunity to view a mental health awareness video and have our community member testimonial, and then the proclamation. There we go. So today's slide is a demonstration of the collaborative efforts across Washington County regarding suicide prevention. As you see here in the Department of Health and Human Services, both Behavioral Health Division and the Public Health Division work collaboratively. On the left, you'll see the Mental Health and Addictions Care, and within that, you have a variety of services and programs, including our crisis services, such as the Hawthorne Crisis Line. We have school-based health centers, and we have post-vention. Then you also have, within the Public Health Division, three programs, the Research Analytics, Informatics and Data Program, which manages our suicide surveillance system, our Medical Examiner's Office, which manages investigations, and our Strategy Program, which houses our Suicide Prevention Program, which includes our Get Trained to Help, free training available in the community, and our Suicide Prevention Council. And with that, I will turn it over to Zev Braun, our Suicide Prevention Coordinator, and hopefully, yes.
If I might ask a brief question? I'm not familiar with post-vention. Could you, either now or later, help me get familiar with that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would be happy to answer. So post-vention is kind of the last line of defense in the broader suicide prevention landscape. It's when a suicide death has actually already occurred, and trained or untrained people come together to respond to that death by supporting the family that may have lost someone, the community, the coworkers, because it turns out that suicide can actually be contagious in some cases. It makes people feel despair once someone leaves this world. So based on following the data, that's become a very important toolkit item. Thank you. And I'm Zev Braun, as Marie already said. I'm the Suicide Prevention Program Coordinator, started back in November. I guess I should advance this slide. So what is Suicide Prevention Month? I actually didn't know it was a worldwide observance, but it is, based on a little digging. And across the globe, people really come together during September to raise awareness about suicide, to share prevention resources as we develop them, to spread hope to folks who may be thinking about a loved one that was lost to them, have suicidal thoughts themselves, have a mental health condition that they're struggling with, and to support people who have left someone behind. Suicide Prevention Month, in essence, if you boil it down, is really just to de-stigmatize that conversation, like Marie mentioned, the "I'm not doing okay" conversation, because it is so hard to actually say that to someone when you feel the most perhaps intense pain you've ever felt, and you don't know if the person you're talking to is going to reject you or cast it aside, or if they may be burdened by what you say in a bad way. A lot of people keep it inside themselves, and that's really dangerous because it can exacerbate the thoughts in your mind and push you closer towards action. There is a myth that talking about suicide can actually give someone the idea. That is a myth, as we've found in research. People already know that they can do that when they're thinking about it, and it actually reduces a person's risk if you, as their friend, to bring it up to them and say, hey, are you, are you doing all right? Is something wrong? Just wanted to also say that in Washington County, a little bit of data, our suicide rate is about 14 deaths per 100,000, kind of a jargon statement, but that's equivalent to the national rate in the U.S. It's lower than the Oregon rate because the state has, unfortunately, an elevated suicide rate, especially in rural communities in Oregon. But in Washington County, that equates to 80 to 90 deaths per year by suicide, which is about a person dying every four days in our county. On the right-hand side of the screen shows some of the events that are going to be occurring this month, tailing into next month, and kind of showing that in Washington County, we already have people formally or informally celebrating this month and beyond it. There'll be some free trainings on GetTrainedToHelp.com, workshops for clinicians, film screenings for veterans and the broader community, a community conversation I'll be organizing, and then something called the Out of the Darkness Walk in Portland for people who have lost someone, advocates for suicide prevention, anyone else that's curious. On the left-hand side of the screen, we also created a flyer to share with community partners about some of these events, and there will also be a social media campaign unfolding on the English and Spanish HHS Facebook pages to kind of share some more information with the community. Oops. Okay, there we go. So the Suicide Prevention Council, it's not within the Suicide Prevention Program, but it works in tandem, and it's a group of stakeholders that come from many different fields. We have first responders, healthcare staff, law enforcement, but also community-based organizations, survivors of suicide loss, people that have attempted suicide, behavioral health providers, all kinds of folks. They came together in 2013 because they identified this was a problem in our county, and at that time, our rate was higher than it is today. A few years later, they were absorbed by the Community Health Improvement Plan, and after I started my position last November, we reconvened to prioritize what we wanted to do this fiscal year. The group voted and decided that community engagement was our path forward. And on the right, you can see some yard signs that we designed and printed that just have very simple messages of hope in English and Spanish. That's not all of the ones pictured on the screen. We also put some QR codes at the bottom so people could scan with their phones to find ways to get free training or resources. And these are some pictures that many of the different groups that hosted rallies sent to me afterwards. We pursued a model where we recruited hosts to host their own rallies around the county. We provided them with all the materials and snacks, a safety briefing for the volunteers so that we could spread the message broader. We ended up having over 30 rallies in a month with upwards of 150 to 200 volunteers, and I only got good feedback from this. People passing by sometimes would join the rallies. Local businesses would give free drinks or milkshakes to the people on the street, lots of honking. We have on the top right, some kids from Tigerhead High School even participated, lots of different groups, and now community organizations want to do it again. The other thing we did as a Suicide Prevention Council was host a demonstration video project where we invited community members into the Tuolton Valley Community Television Studio to kind of model in the first person to the camera how they would initiate that conversation with someone I was talking about. How would you check in with someone who may be in trouble? We had everyone from middle schoolers to retired militaries. We had everyone from middle schoolers to retired military veterans participate. Four different languages were spoken. It really blew me away how many people wanted to be there, even through the snow, that weird day in April was the first day of recordings. And on the left, we ended up developing 15 different 30-second ad videos that were pushed onto streaming TV services like Roku, Hulu, Samsung TV, and YouTube, and also created two demonstration compilation videos where several different community members are featured, showing different ways of approaching that topic. We'll be able to show one to you after this presentation. We combined that in a media campaign along with some static banner images you can see on the bottom left of the screen that were put across the internet on various websites. And in general, based on the statistics that an advertising consultant can talk about, we got some really good engagement, much higher than your typical ad would get. It's not a great way to measure exactly what happened on an individual level, but we think this did have a big impact. And the state wanted me to create a version of some of those compilation videos for them, so I had the designers redo the ending so that there's general information. And now it's being used by the Oregon Alliance to Prevent Suicide, Oregon Health Authority, other county coalitions. So that went really well. And I think that's everything, but I can't, okay there, yeah. So now we'd like to show you the video. It's just going to be the English one, since we don't have time for both that and the Spanish. And then we'll have Diane Benavides-Willy give a brief presentation. And with the video, it might show a little ad on the bottom, which unfortunately is right where the captions are. So if that appears, just exit out of it.
Hey, so you seem kind of off lately, and I just wanted to let you know if there's anything you need, I'm here. If you want to cry, I'll cry with you. I'm here for you.
Hola. Ultimamente yo te he notado un poco triste y agitada. ¿Hay alguien que yo te pueda ayudar?
¡Hola! Mi amor, yo estoy feliz de verte. Con el gusto nos sentaremos contigo, beberemos café en la taza, y la vida será hermosa. Te amo.
Hey, I noticed that you haven't really been acting like yourself lately, and I wonder if there's something going on. I mean, it sort of seems like there could be anxiety, or you've just been feeling really down. And I wonder if you would talk with me about it, because it's okay if you're feeling those things.
Nacomo da kubira yuko jen dingaha, dumugenzee, ukawagomono, yokuvu ga nagusa. Dingaha woshora kum, kumvukisha, changhe ngakubira, ah, anhavandi vanu, woshora kugenda kuvukisha, kubera ndatahura yu, kubuzima vukoe chane gos.
Hey, I want you to know that I'm here for you, that I hear you, that I see you, that anything you want to talk about, I'm here for you. Anytime of the day, I am here.
I know you've been feeling down some. And I want you to know that if you're feeling blue, you should call me. I want you to promise me, please.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that gives me some emotions when I see that, even, even now. I believe now it's time for Diane to share a little bit. Diane is the Vice President of Equity Inclusion and Workforce Diversity at LifeWorks Northwest, which is one of the largest behavioral health providers in the area. She's been doing lots of suicide prevention work.
Good morning. As mentioned, my name is Diane Benavides-Willy, and I'm actually speaking to you this morning as a suicide attempt survivor. Zev didn't go into many of the demographics, but what I will tell you is I did not meet the demographics that most people would be concerned about. I came from a middle-class family with two parents intact, with a big support system. One of the things that we do know about suicide is that there are two major factors that lead someone to suicide, or at least to contemplate that that's their best option. And that is feeling like a burden to others, and it also is hopelessness. What I would tell you is if you were to talk to 16-year-old Diane who attempted suicide, I never would have thought that I would be here speaking with you this morning. In feeling hopelessness, what I will say is it's most similar to a big, black, empty hole. And the thing about hopelessness is it really robs you of possibilities that you don't even know exist. But here I am today. And all, what I will tell you is my suicide attempt led me into the ICU for two weeks and subsequent residential care. And thinking back to the care that I received, not once in any of that time did someone actually mention the word "suicide." It was, "How are things going? What led you to being so unhappy?" But we didn't talk about it, and granted, this was a number of years ago. But that stuck with me. And even through that, what I will say is I had great, amazing care, and I really understood that people really are there and that they cared for you. So much so, that I became a licensed professional counselor. So I'm a therapist by trade, I'm a certified alcohol and drug counselor, and as Zev mentioned, I am the Vice President of Equity Inclusion and Workforce Development at LifeWorks Northwest, which is a large community mental health organization. And there, I steer our Zero Suicide Committee. I am a member of the Washington County Suicide Prevention Council as well as the Suicide Prevention Council Steering Committee. And here's what I will tell you. Today, you have an opportunity to change a life. You have the opportunity to save a life. When you feel hopeless, you don't think of all the things that are on your horizon. I never would have thought about going to school. I never would imagine being in my 50s and living to this day, and yet here I am. We must do things to de-stigmatize suicide, to make it okay to talk about, because when we can talk about it, when we can address it, we can get services to the people that need it the most. This proclamation can make a difference in the lives of Washington County community members. But more importantly, it's an opportunity to save a life. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Diane. Now I would like to read you the proclamation we drafted. Whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of their age, gender, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, economic status, religion, or personal background. And whereas suicide was the second-leading cause of death for Oregonians aged 15 to 44 years in 2020, and the ninth-leading cause of death for all age groups in the state. And whereas in 2021, 86 people died by suicide in Washington County. And whereas Washington County veterans have a suicide rate four times higher than the general population, and the risk of suicide is highest in older adults. And whereas the stigma associated with mental health and suicide discourages people from seeking help. And whereas suicide is preventable, mental health and crisis resources are available in Washington County, and the simple act of empathizing and talking about suicide with someone who is struggling reduces their risk. And whereas suicide prevention and mental health first aid training is available on GetTrainedToHelp.com for anyone living in Washington, Clackamas, or Moulton County. And whereas the Suicide Prevention Council of Washington County was formed in 2013 by a collaboration of mental health providers, first responders, health systems, educators, community-based organizations, government agencies, and survivors of suicide loss to pursue strategies that reduce suicide risk. And whereas the Public Health Division and the Behavioral Health Division and the Department of Health and Human Services join with other county departments to create a safer community by reducing the stigma associated with suicide, training professionals in the general public in evidence-based suicide prevention courses, providing technical assistance to external organizations, improving access to trainings and services for people of diverse cultures and languages, pursuing lethal means safety as a core strategy to saving lives, and partnering with the Suicide Prevention Council to engage the whole community in suicide prevention. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this sixth day of September 2022, the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of September as Suicide Prevention Month in Washington County.
Thank you, Mr. Braun. Thank you, Ms. Benavides-Willy. Willy, thank you for bringing to life the, the situation of potential suicide and for sharing your path with us. Really appreciate your personal story, but also your professional career as well. Thank you. Commissioners, we have a proclamation to consider. Do we have a motion as well as any comments before we take a vote?
I'd like, Chair, I'd like to make a comment. First of all, I want to say thank you very much for this work. It's such important work to be doing, and, and you can just feel your heart and your, your, your passion around this, and that, that's so important. Suicide has affected all of us. I know that in my life, it is, it has impacted me, my family, my friends. And what I take away from this is the outstanding work that you've done in educating others, because so many of us that are, that are involved in that circle don't know what the tools are to be able to address the person in need. Your, your, your videos that you shared were fabulous, and they were, they were so, they were so spot-on in relationship to the person that was talking. You know, it, it just, it felt, it felt so very real. So that type of education is critical to addressing this issue. And I just want to express my appreciation for all that you're doing, for your personal stories, as well as the professional work that you bring to this. So, so thank you.
I'd just make a quick comment. I apologize, I didn't get to hear it all. I had an emergency phone call, I had to run out. But I heard the last presentation, it was well-done, and I think we all share your concerns and passion for the subject. And so it's, it's an easy resolution for us all to support wholeheartedly.
I'll add to say one of the comments that, by the way, great presentation, and I apologize, I had my electronic hand up throughout your presentation. I didn't have any questions. I don't even know how that got raised, but somehow it did. So, and so sorry if there was any interruptions. I appreciate your presentations, thank you so much. One of the comments or the phrase you used was to pointing to us that we can make a difference with this resolution. I feel like you are making a difference, sharing your story. You are saving a lives, and thank you so much for sharing your story and, and overcoming, and, and really underlining that there is help out there. You can overcome suicide, but, you know, there's a lot of help. And I, I didn't, while I didn't experience firsthand, as Commissioner Pam Trees was just sharing, I remember when we were doing the contact tracing, and we were reaching out to people. My own staff were coming back and asking me, "Nafisa, what do I do?" Because the person I'm trying to trace is contemplating suicide. And that was the first, you know, sort of, wait a minute, what? And really pausing and figuring out, what are resources that we can provide to our community that is culturally competent? And not necessarily, you know, while I appreciate the language translation of the video, it does, you know, cultural competency doesn't stop just the language translation. And I appreciate your role as the equity, you know, and in sharing your story and some of the limitations to our own services that we provide to our community. So thank you, and for being the watchdog to say, "Hey, wait a minute." I was, you know, there's different ways to count people and to help, and not, it's not one size fits all when it comes to suicide prevention. So thank you, and I fully support this proclamation forever and always.
I think a lot has been said. I completely agree with it. That was a great video. I liked it.
Thank you, Commissioners. I would just add to, add my personal comments that every activity that you have planned as part of Suicide Prevention Month, every piece of information, the videos are awesome. I have viewed some other ones that you've produced as well. The signs, the lawn signs, I've seen those throughout our community on different days, and I can say personally that it helps, no matter where I am in my own mental health journey, from one day, one week, one month, one year to the next. Just knowing that I'm not alone, that I am seen, has been very helpful to me. So thank you. With that, do we have a motion? We have a motion to adopt today's proclamation. Do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Rogers. All those in favor of adopting today's proclamation as Suicide Prevention Month for September 2022, thank you for raising your hand, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you to the three of you, as well as to Ms. Semantle for bringing this forward to us today. Next, we'll move on to announcing vacancies on the County Board of Commissioners. We will be taking applications through October 18th or until all vacancies are filled on a number of our boards and commissions. We have over 30. The Aging and Veteran Services Advisory Council, 10 positions are available. The Audit Committee, two positions are available now and one position later this year. The Behavioral Health Council, one position available now. Board of Property Tax Appeals, six positions available now. The Columbia Pacific Economic Development District, also known as COLPAC, two positions are available. The Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District and Urban Road Maintenance District Combined Budget Committee, it's ESPD-U-R-M-D, three positions are available now. The Fair Board, one position is available after December. The Fairgrounds Advisory Commission Committee, excuse me, one position is available now, and three positions will be available after the end of this year. The Fair Board, Farm Board of Review, two positions. Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee, one position is available now. Homeless Plan Advisory Committee, also known as H-PAC, one position available now, six after the end of the year. The Housing Advisory Committee, also known as HAC, H-A-C, two positions available now. The Housing Advisor, excuse me, the Housing Authority Board of Directors, one position will be available with the turn of the new year. And if you tuned in earlier, you got to see part of what we do is the Housing Authority Board of Directors. In addition to the Board of Commissioners, there are two community members. Metzger Park Local Improvement District Advisory Board, seven positions available now. North Bethany County Service District for Roads Budget Committee, one position available now. Northwest Area Commission on Transportation, that's also known as Northwest ACT, one position is available now. The Park and Recreation Advisory Board, four positions available now. The Planning Commission, two positions are available after January of next year. The Public Health Advisory Council, one position is available now, and three positions are available after January of next year. The Public Safety Coordinating Council, also known as PSCC, three positions are available at the turn of the new year. The Rainbow Lane Special Road District Board, one position will be available at the start of next year. Rural Roads Operation and Maintenance Advisory Committee, also known as ROMAC, two positions available now and three at the start of the new year. The Urban Road Maintenance District Advisory Committee, also known as ERMDAC, one position available now and one position- available now and one position available after December 31st. You often hear these acronyms in our meetings. Washington County and Service District for Lighting Number One Budget Committee, it's a combined budget committee, three positions are available now. And lastly, the Washington County Salary Commission, there are six positions available at the start of the new year. So, as I've listed, we have several committees that have vacancies now. Some current members of the committee whose terms are expiring will have the opportunity to reapply, but they may choose to not reapply. Or, you know, we may just have people who want to cycle off of committees. So, please do look at the county website, select Board and Committees, and just click on Applications, and you can get further information about each and every one of the committees. These committees do a lot of advisory work to our staff as well as to the full board. So, I encourage everyone to consider them. That's it. That's all we had to do today was announce those. So, next, we'll move on to some really meaty stuff. We have four public hearings today, and the first time we'll be doing them through our new hybrid meeting setup. The first one is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution and order approving the Clean Water Services Pay Plan for Represented Employees for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. And I would like to introduce Holly Dober, the Human Resources and Risk Management Director for Clean Water Services. And standing in for our CEO of Clean Water Services today is our Legal Counsel, Mr. Jerry Linder. Thank you to each of you for being here with us today. Is there a short staff report before we go through the public hearing? Yes, thank you. I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, Chair Harrington. So, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Holly Dober, who leads our, as you said, Human Resources Department, to give you a staff report on Item F1. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Thank you for having me today. My name is Holly Dober. I'm the Director of Human Resources and Risk Management for Clean Water Services. The item before you is a public hearing to adopt resolution and order approving Clean Water Services Pay Plan for Represented Employees for Fiscal Year 2022-2023, as required in the district's employment policies and guidelines. The district is recommending that the board adopt the pay plan establishing salaries for represented employees. The district contracted with Mercer to complete a classification and compensation assessment, which reviewed the current job framework, compensation strategies and programs, and assessed pay mechanics. The outcome of the market study adjusted the represented wage structure to align with current salaries in the market. It will allow the district to retain key talent, provide opportunities for career development, and offer competitive salaries. The new wage structure was negotiated into the labor agreement with Teamsters Local 223. The district utilizes a performance-based pay compensation system, and employees receive pay increases through the annual performance appraisal process. For fiscal year 2022, district employees do not receive an automatic cost of living adjustment, nor do they receive step increases. Current represented employees will be placed in the job classification that closely corresponds to their current job classification and the wage range that contains the employee's current rate of pay. The additional items in Exhibit B are housekeeping items from the planning and execution of the fiscal year 2023 budget. It includes 11 redesignations, five job title changes, and outlines the job series for each classification. If there are any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer those.
Commissioners, before we go to our public hearing, are there any questions on today's staff report? Seeing none, I would like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to testify today on this matter?
We had no one signed up in the room, Madam Chair. Would any members of our attendees list would like to provide public testimony on this public hearing item? I'll give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I will close today's public hearing. What are the wishes of the commission with regard to adopting this resolution and order?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution and order approving the Clean Water Services Represented Employee Salary Schedule for Fiscal Year 2022-2023, also known as the Pay Plan. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to our second public hearing. Congratulations to you, Ms. Dober, Mr. Linder, and to everyone involved in developing that plan. Next, we'll move on to our second public hearing, which is to hold a public hearing and authorize the Chief Executive Officer to sign a labor agreement with Teamsters Local Number 223, and adopt a resolution and order updating and implementing Clean Water Services personnel policies. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, members of the board. Ms. Dober also has a staff report on this. I also will mention that we previously discussed some of these issues in executive session, so you have some familiarity with the topics that we've discussed, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Dober.
Thank you, Jerry. Good morning. Thank you again. My name's Holly Dober. I'm the Director of Human Resources and Risk Management for Clean Water Services. The item before you is a public hearing to authorize the Chief Executive Officer to sign a labor agreement with Teamsters Local 223, and adopt resolution and order updating and implementing Clean Water Services personnel policies. The district began negotiating with the labor agreement with Teamsters Local Number 223 on May 4, 2022. Both parties came to an agreement with the union members voting and ratifying the labor agreement on August 25, 2022. The primary goals and outcomes of the agreement were to control costs in health and welfare, provide a competitive compensation structure, promote fairness and equity, and attract and retain employees. The negotiations covered the full contract with minor changes made within the agreement to clarify interpretation, including updating language to be inclusive. District-wide personnel policies will be updated and implemented in accordance with the signing of the labor agreement, including the following economic policies: goal sharing, retirement plans, inclement condition pay, bilingual pay, and holidays. There any other questions or comments? I'd be happy to answer those now.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Ms. Dober. And with that, I'd like to open a public meeting. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak with us on this matter?
We had no one signed up, Madam Chair. Would any members of our attendee online like to provide public comment on this public hearing item? I'll give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll close today's public hearing. What are the wishes of the commission with regard to authorizing the Chief Equity, excuse me, the Chief Executive Officer to sign a labor agreement with Teamsters Local Number 223, and adopt a resolution and order updating and implementing the Clean Water Services personnel policies?
Move, Bill Pruff.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers, and a second from Commissioner Phi. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Congratulations to our negotiating team, our full management team, and to all members of our Teamsters workforce at Clean Water Services, as well as all employees involved. Thank you. Next, we'll move to our third public hearing, moving away from Clean Water Services, the utility that we are the Board of Directors for, over to the land use side of the world, to consider the annexation of four tax lots and right-of-way totaling approximately 39 acres to the Tuolton Hills Park and Recreation District, also known as THPRD. And before we do that, we have our land use subject matter experts here for a brief staff presentation. Please take it away.
Good morning, Chair Harrington, Commissioners. I'm Brian Robb, Associate Planner with Land Use and Transportation, and I'll be giving a brief presentation on Proposed Boundary Change 22-007. The tax lot depicted here is located on the west side of Southwest 175th Avenue, just south of South Horse Tail Drive. Oops, skipped ahead a little bit there. The proposal is a request by the property owner, TNHC Oregon LLC, to annex four tax lots and right-of-way totaling approximately 39 acres into the Tuolton Hills Park and Recreation District. The request was initiated by a consent petition from the property owner. County staff has reviewed the request and found that it meets the criteria for boundary changes, as outlined in the staff report. Staff recommends that the board conduct the public hearing, and at the conclusion of the hearing, adopt a resolution and order approving the annexation with the approval becoming effective November 9. If there's any public testimony today by anyone other than the applicant, I'll need to read a brief statement into the record. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on the staff report? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to proceed to open the public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to testify on this matter?
We had no one signed up, Madam Chair. Would any members of our attendees list like to provide public comment on this public hearing item? I'll give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And with that, I'll close today's public hearing. I should have made my comment a little bit earlier. I just wanted to note that this area is part of the South Cooper Mountain area, which is one of our recent urban growth boundary expansion areas. So, it's not surprising that properties like this will be annexed into various jurisdictions and service districts as part of the development of new housing in these areas. So, I want to just comment to our staff, thank you for working with all of the property owners and jurisdictional partners, so that we do everything well. And as part of that process, I now need to ask for a motion such that we adopt the resolution and order for Service District Annexation 22-007 LRP/BC. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second from, we have a motion from Commissioner Phi, a second from Commissioner Treese. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. All righty. Next, we'll move on to the fourth of four public hearings for today. This one is to consider the annexation of one tax lot and right-of-way totaling two acres to the Tuolton Valley Water District. So, I'll turn it back over to our subject matter experts.
Thank you again, Brian Robb with Land Use and Transportation. Just wanted to note that these numbers are out of order, but they're correct in terms of the presentation order we're giving today. 22-006 is the next presentation I'll give. Okay, the tax lot depicted here is located at 21727 Northwest West Union Road, approximately 650 feet west of Bendemere Road in unincorporated Washington County. Now, case file number 22-006 is a request from Mei Hui Wang to annex one tax lot and right-of-way totaling approximately two acres into the Tuolton Valley Water District. The property is outside of the urban growth boundary, and it's within the Agriculture and Forest Five Land Use District. Both the Rural Natural Resource Plan Policy 22, as well as Metro, allow for these types of extraterritorial water connections outside of the UGB, such as with Northwest West Union Road. There's an existing TVWD line in Northwest Union Road, and the resident at the property is experiencing issues with their well, and they've requested to connect to the existing line. Just wanted to make that clear. The request was also initiated by a consent petition from the property owner, and county staff have reviewed this for consistency with local policies for boundary changes, as well as regional and state, as outlined in the staff report. Staff recommends, again, that the board conduct the public hearing, and at the conclusion of the hearing, adopt the resolution and order approving the annexation becoming effective November 9. Again, if there's any public testimony, I'll have to read a brief statement into the record. But, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. Commissioners, are there any questions on the staff report? Seeing none, I'd like to open today's public hearing. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. We had no one sign up. Would any members in our virtual attendees list wish to provide public testimony on this public hearing item? Give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll close today's public hearing and ask for a motion to adopt the resolution and order for Service District Annexation 22-006 LRP/BC.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Phi, a second from Commissioner Treese. All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you, Commissioners. Next, we'll move on to an action item. We have just one action item on the agenda today, and this is with regard to a really exciting project for us here in Washington County. And to give you a great overview and more on this, I would like to start by turning the presentation mic over to Kristin Burke, our Mental Health Services Supervisor. Please.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Commissioners. We're very excited to be here today. For the record, my name is Kristin Burke. I'm a supervisor within the Behavioral Health Division of Washington County. With me today is Greg Wyman, our Real Property Manager with Facilities, and then also online, if needed, is Nick O'Conne, our Division Manager. And so, if there's questions he needs to answer, we can certainly elevate him to participate. Do we have?
Do we have a presentation? Yes, we do.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So, for anybody who's listening in who's not familiar with this project, I will provide a very, very brief overview, and then Greg will provide the information about the actual sale. So, the Center for Addictions, Triage and Treatment is a project we've been working on for over three years now in terms of planning, and now we're moving into the operational phase of it. This is a project that is really designed, we call it the CAT for short. The CAT is a project that we've been working on to really create new treatment infrastructure in our community, really with an eye towards the continuum of care and what's lacking in our community. So, as we've gone through this process, we've really designed it so that there'll be two buildings, each operating with different services. Today, we're going to focus on the Community Services Building, which is all outpatient services, as opposed to the residentially based, which is the other building, which we're not talking about today. Through our work on this project, we identified the preferred attributes of a site that would house the community services, and the Elam Young property really rose to the top of the list in terms of meeting all the needs that we have for this program to operate out of it. Really specifically, it's a building that is really conducive to the types of services we want to offer out of the site, and it's very accessible via public transportation, which was one of our key attributes we were looking for. We've been working with the City of Hillsborough to address some minor text change in their code language that would allow us to operate substance use treatment services, and that's been addressed. And this time, I'd like to turn it over to Greg to give details about the actual sale per purchase.
Thank you, Kristin. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Greg Wyman. I'm the Real Property Manager here at Washington County. The subject property is located at 5250 Northeast Elam Young Parkway in Hillsborough. It consists of 42,253 square feet, single-story building situated on 3.44 acres of land. On December 27th, 2021, subject to your board's authorization, the county entered into a purchase and sale agreement with the purchase price of $8,275, which included all fixtures, furniture, and equipment presently in this building. An appraisal of the property in January of 2022 confirmed the contract price of $8,275. Conditions to purchase, or what's commonly known as the feasibility period, included a physical building and property inspection reports, zoning to meet the intended use, and the final approval of the Board of County Commissioners. The initial feasibility period expired on March 15th, 2022. The county exercised its option under the initial purchase and sale agreement to extend that to April 15th, 2022, and negotiated two additional extension periods now to expire on September 16th, 2022. The City of Hillsborough text change that Kristin mentioned, that code was approved on August 16th and will become effective on September 15th of this year. The City of Hillsborough text change code, I'm sorry. In closing, the county requests your board's approval to purchase this property for the operation of the Center for Addictions, Triage and Treatment for the Community Services Facility. With that, we'll move to the next slide if there's any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments that you'd wish to share?
Only that it's a great project, let's get going. Take them too long to get here.
Very excited.
Thank you.
Is there an opportunity to build up since it's a single story?
You know, we did not explore that because the building really is the size we were looking for, for the community services aspect of the project. So we don't, based on the way the building is located right now, we don't need to expand it, we just merely need to do a tenant improvement on the inside to make it work for us.
But I believe, based upon various briefings and presentations, public presentations that you've made to the steering committee for this great project, and also to our board and the public, that your project, there's the current need that we've been living through for a number of years now, but there's also projected need out into the future. And it's my understanding that the proposal for these two sets of buildings under the umbrella of a new Center for Addiction, Triage and Treatment, you believe that it will help address our current need as well as projected future need. But yes, Commissioner Phi, as you mentioned, with any property that we are purchasing, there's always the possibility over future decades for looking at expansions, remodelings, and so forth. And we have a great facilities management team that Mr. Wyman is part of to help us continue to do even better and better work on behalf of our public. Thank you.
Chair Harrington, if I may add, for members of the public, we are scheduled to come back to your board on October 18th with a comprehensive update on the CAT progress, and so members of the viewing public may want to hold that date on their calendars.
Terrific. Thank you very much, Ms. Angie. That was Ms. Angie, who is our county administrative officer. Thank you. All right, well, seeing no additional comments, what are the wishes of the board with regard to approving the purchase of property located at 5250 Northeast Elam Young Parkway, Hillsborough 97124, for the operation of the Center for Addiction Treatment and Triage and Treatment, also known as CAT, C-A-double-T, Community Services Facility? We have a motion from Commissioner Phi, a second from Commissioner Rogers. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. So please do execute that property purchase on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get to work on it right away.
And thank you for today's presentation, so we can ensure our public has the chance to join us on this journey. Keep up the good work. Thank you, Mr. O'Conne, for joining us virtually for that topic as well. Appreciate it. All right. Next, we move on to our second public communication opportunity for members of our community to share their thoughts with us. This opportunity is for up to five minutes per person. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to address us at this time?
Madam Chair, we had no one sign up in person today. Would any members of our online viewing audience wish to provide comments for up to five minutes on any county-related topic? I'll give you just a moment to utilize the raised hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we have board announcements. So I'll announce our upcoming meetings, and then I have a question. Next week, Vice Chair Willie will be chairing our work session, which begins at 9:00 a.m. Both Commissioners Trese and myself will be away attending the World Water Conference in Copenhagen, Denmark, on behalf of the Clean Water Services Board of Directors, joining our wonderful leadership team of Clean Water Services at that conference. On Tuesday, September 20th, we'll have, just like today, our work session starting at 9:00, a board meeting starting at 10:00, and then the work session will reconvene after. Tuesday, September 27th, our pair of meetings starts with an afternoon work session at 2:00 and a board meeting at 6:30. Then, before you know it, we're into the month of October with a work session at 9:00 a.m. The, on October 4th, Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting at 10:00, just like today, and then our Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting follows at about 10:30 a.m. On Thursday, October 6th, we'll have our monthly board roundtable starting at 9:00, and then the following Tuesday, October 11th, we'll have a work session at 9:00 a.m. Before I ask for other board announcements, I just want to comment to our staff. Thank you very much for all the work that you have done to help us transition from an entire virtual set of meetings these last couple of years, and now to a hybrid setup. Things have gone very smoothly. Just related to it, one question. Was there something I should have been doing with this little gizmo?
So, Madam Chair, Commissioners, so that is our high-tech option as a, like, mute your video. So if you needed to excuse yourself for anything, you could just slide that over, and that'll close off your video.
Like that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the work that has gone into this. I will say that people have probably seen me turning my head a lot today as I try to take in the full dais, as well as pay attention to the agendas, the presentation, and be mindful of where the camera is today. So hopefully, that hasn't been too much of a transition for our viewing public. I'll get better at it, I know, in the coming weeks. Commissioners, are there any other board announcements for today that you'd like to share? Nope. Seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn today's Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. We have a motion from Commissioner Phi, a second from Commissioner Pam Trese. All those in favor of adjourning today's meeting, please raise your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Our meeting is hereby adjourned. We'll reconvene our work session at times certain, 1:00. Thank you, everyone.